It's three o'clock and we'll go ahead and get started with our meeting. We have kind of a lengthy meeting, so I'm sure that the other commissioners will come in, but they have form, so. So we'll go ahead and get started. We'll call it a meeting order. And at 3:01, oh, we're going to make it. We'll be on pause for a couple of seconds. Everyone looks nice in their t-shirts. Okay, we'll go ahead and resume the order of our meeting today. Can I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks? Commissioner Ovechowski? Commissioner McFarland?
President.
Commissioner Zabel? Commissioner Salem?
President.
Commissioner Bailey?
President.
May I have approval of the agenda and a motion to follow?
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second, roll call.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Zabel?
Yes.
Commissioner Salem?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Okay, are there any comments on the agenda items only? Hearing done. Our next entertaining motion for approval of the minutes.
A motion that we approve for our meeting minutes from September 29th to 2022.
I'll second.
It's been properly moved and second, roll call.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Zabel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we have new business. We have another resolutions that we need to approve, so we'll take the first resolution. Resolution 2022-05, approval of the 2023 MTW tiered flat rents and minimum rents by bedroom size.
Does this make a difference?
I have a brief discussion on that.
This is just our annual thing that we do for the flat tiered rents. And so through a, the way that it's done is we look at the area median income that HUD provides us, and it's a whole Excel spreadsheet of how to get those numbers that our third party came up with, our party consultant. It's been approved with MTW plan for probably like since 2012, 13, I believe. So this is just the annual thing we must do.
If there's no questions, I'll ask for a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second, we have roll call.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Zabel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Our next resolution today is Resolution 2022-06, Approval of Revised MTW Local Payment Standards.
And just like the flat tiered rent schedule and minimum rents, this is something that has been approved by HUD through our MTW. And so each year, we have a third party that our local payment standards and put them in like SIS tracks so that we can get the dollar amounts for both single family units as well as those that are on-site. And so this is just stuff that's done. We have seen an increase as what we expected that as well for all of them.
Was it an increase for the renters or how much?
This is for the total contract rent that will be able to be able to be done for the renters. So it actually gives our participants more searching power when they're going out trying to find a unit.
So you approved the increase?
Correct.
Okay, maybe they have a motion for approval.
A motion to approve our Resolution 2022-06, the approval of the revised MTW local payment standards.
I'll second.
It's been properly, we have a second, let me have a roll call, please.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Zabel?
Yes.
Commissioner Salem?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Moving right along, Resolution 2207, Approval of Loan to Oakwood Trace Townhomes Help.
This is a resolution asking the board to approve this loan. Oakwood Trace has been experiencing an increased crime and violence at the property. And the law that we're asking the board to approve will go to help us upgrade the lights and cameras at that property. And at this time, Eric and I are still reviewing some information about the property, so we're not going to be taking any actions yet. We're asking the board to approve the loan. When that time does come, we're able to make the loan to Oakwood Trace to be able to upgrade or make the necessary upgrades.
Did Tony Anderson, if you want to add anything you'd like to go into terms of what you are?
Well, I prepared the loan documents and the resolution. Willie and I talked about it. I think it's probably a good idea that this is an opportunity. The Housing Authority has the funds to be able to, under the moving to work, is to be able to loan it. So it's going to secure the needed cause. The thing we want to make sure of is in terms of the limited partner. We're in the process of right now, I'm trying to talk about securing that limited partner's interest, the investor's interest, to get them out of it. And this is just an opportunity to get things started for security as opposed to waiting.
Okay, I appreciate that. All right, we've already had the approval.
I just have a question. How long do we think it's going to take? Because I know we've been talking about the ownership of Oakwood Trace for a while now. Like, what's the, what's the next step other than this? Like, if we want to bring this, what would be the next step to obtain that property?
We have, the issue is the investor. Several years ago, the Housing Authority reached out to the investment and said, hey, we want to, have you exit? And so we can take control. And the investor at that time was not interested. The investor indicated that they still wanted to remain at the property. We disagree with that, and we've got the right to have that exit. So since then, we've been trying to reach out to them. I've made some attempts. I've got some information from the auditor now that maybe I was reaching out to the wrong people, the wrong group. But they haven't, they haven't said no again recently, but we think we'll be able to get it done. In terms of timeline, though.
Oh, no.
Yeah, oh, no, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine. And yeah, this is just supposed to like stop the bleeding right now. Yeah. Be able to fix what's going on. Sounds good.
Another question, sorry. I noticed that on the safety issues. Have the city stepped in to do anything yet?
Um, so not that right now. We've had some meetings with the city. We've asked if they could upgrade the lights at the property that's behind there, which is what belongs to the partners in the future. But at this time, it's pretty much the housing emergency responsibility to try to get that property where it needs to be since it is managed by us.
Another question. Okay, we've had motion. Can I get approval?
Debate motion?
I don't think we have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion's been made. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Zabel?
Yes.
Commissioner Salem?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Okay, our next resolution.
It's not something to approve.
Okay. Need approval for the Intergovernmental Agreement for Housing Landlord Assistance Between the County of Champaign and the Housing Authority of Champaign County.
This is an agreement, as I explained to the board a couple of months ago, we received some funding from the county to do landlord incentives, hopefully to help us increase our track-based landlord incentives, to help us increase opportunities, housing opportunities for our clients. And so this is just an intergovernmental agreement between HACC and the county for that funds, for those funds.
Okay, can we have a motion for approval?
So moved. I'll second.
It's been properly moved, it's been properly approved and second, roll call.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Ovechowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Zabel? Commissioner Salem?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
And that amount again was $85,000, so that'll go toward the landlord incentives.
Okay. Uh, we have, can you make a note that we have the full board? Thank you. We're moving right here for these resolutions, so we're, the next resolution is approval of Intergovernmental Agreement for Housing Supportive Services Assistance Between the County of Champaign and the Housing Authority of Champaign County.
Again, this is a part of the American Rescue Plan Act funding, so this is $300,000 that'll go toward supportive services for our new admissions and voucher holders who are, you know, need help with security deposit or, you know, past due bills or anything like that, anything that creates a barrier for them to be housed. So the county has invested this money into supportive services, so that's what the agreement is for.
Motion for approval?
So moved.
I'll second. It's been properly approved and second, roll call.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Ovechowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Zabel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Our next one is approval of Intergovernmental Agreement for Housing Assistance Between the County of Champaign and the Housing Authority of Champaign County.
All right, another agreement with the county. This one is for the renovation of Maple Grove. This is for $675,000 to go into that. But it's just a agreement between HACC and the county. And at our December meeting, we'll have more updates about where we are with the renovations and everything like that. So we have the board to approve that.
Thank you. Ask for a motion for approval. Thank you, second.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Ovechowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Zabel?
Yes.
Commissioner Salem?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Thank you. Approval of United Way of Champaign County BOV Investment Impact Grant Agreement, Creating Leaders and Restoring Our Community at Oakwood Trace.
This is an agreement, a grant agreement with United Way for $33,200. And this agreement is for programming and rent door bills at Oakwood Trace to try to curb some of the violence there. So we're asking the board to approve this.
Could you just, before I ask for a motion for approval, could you just elaborate just briefly about how you plan to get this and move it forward?
Yes, we have, and I have a couple slides also in my executive directory report. But I can just give a high-level overview. But it's, our LSS team is working on programming such as domestic violence awareness, responding to some of the gun violence, trauma care. And also our maintenance, we purchased 50 regular bills for each of the units. And we'll be, our maintenance team will be installing those regular bills there, so it's great.
All right, I didn't want to take the away.
That's okay, I have more details on the, on the. What'd you say? On the apartments at Oakwood Trace.
Is that the one where you mentioned coming in?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, whatever other question, I didn't mean to get itself correct. I apologize for that, but she'll have more information for it. But can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Ovechowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Zabel?
Yes.
Commissioner Salem?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Okay, we have a couple more to go, but we're here with us. Approval of the United Way of Champaign County BOV Investment Impact Grant Agreement, Youth Build Reaching Further.
This grant is another victory of providing this grant from United Way. $75,000 for the youth program to serve an additional 12 participants outside of their traditional service areas. So with this grant, they can serve individuals who don't have a high school diploma, or who already have a high school diploma, and also have a goal to serve more students and rent tool in other surrounding areas.
Okay, thanks. Motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second, roll call, please.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Is these smart, at least? We'll see. I noticed in this agreement that they asked that it be signed and returned by October 11th. And here we are, October whatever. Is that still? Yeah, it's not going to be a big old.
We did request an extension, so we can get it to the board.
I just don't want to be missing out on it because of, we'll take it that way.
Thank you, good question, good question. Roll call.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Ovechowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Zabel?
Yes.
Commissioner Salem?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Okay. MTW Plan for Discussion Only.
All right, so we have our MTW plan that will be submitted to HUD and we'll ask Stephanie to come up and give the updates. And we've got a couple new activities, and then we've also got some modifications to older activities. And we printed out a copy of the updating, because we've been updating it all week for the board to review.
We have three new activities for the 2023. Yes. The first one is for the supportive services, and that's just to continue providing that support to our families, similar to the support we provided for our clients that came in with the emergency ambulance vouchers. So as Willie mentioned earlier, we did get some funding from the county, but with most, you know, funds, they get exhausted. So once, so for us, they included our MTW plan, we gave these that funding to completely provide, you know, purposes of security deposit, application fees, pass utilities, et cetera, to get our families out. The next activity is the Mid Barrier Shelter, and we'll be partnering with CUAT Home to provide that. As we all know, the fungus pandemic has really increased over the past couple of years, and we're seeing a high need for those without, you know, addresses. You know, people sleeping on the streets, their cars, their parks, wherever. And so this will provide alcohol for 25 to 50 individuals in a semi-combative setting. And so getting access to the MTW plan, again, we can use that funding to subsidize that program.
And I just wanted to add that we don't have any solid plans yet with CUAT Home, but HACC is just wanting to be at the table and wanting to put it in our plan so that we can get some support in any way that we were able to.
And then the third activity is the Community Safety Loan. And so that will allow us to provide loans to either developments owned or managed by HACC or one of our affiliates to invest in safer neighborhoods. So as you know, with gun violence and criminal activity on the rise, we can use funding to cover expenses such as additional lighting, security cameras, and even armed or unarmed security services on those properties. Then we have several modifications to current activities that we are doing. For one, the LSS program. I believe, I talked about this at our last meeting. So one of the things is for our SHIP program, we are increasing the incentive that our participants can earn from 16,000 to 34,000. We discussed that at the last meeting, but that had to be put in our SSS action plan that has to be approved by HUD as well. So not only is it in our SSS action plan, but it also has to go into our MTW plan to get approved and take effect. Also, we just had some clarification to change the age from 18 to 19 to 54 for our MTW requirements. But also, we wanted to signify that for those younger adult household members ages 19 to 24, they still have to either be in school full-time or working, but instead of expecting them to earn what their parents are expecting to earn, we said they just have to at least earn income per year one. And when that's broken down, it's basically the minimum wage working at least 20 hours a week. For any of our older though, household members 25 or 54, they are still required to be in school full-time or working, but they have to meet that annual earned income for the year that they're in the program. We also have about two new instances. So one is a voluntary relinquishment of the voucher. We have some families, some households that our hack, which is the portion that's out in authority pays for their rent, is either $100 or less. So we can provide them an incentive to give up their voucher voluntarily, and in that way, we can serve more families that are in more need. And also with our flat tiered rent schedule, we have a flat tiered rent advance incentive. So if someone comes on the program, no income, they still have to pay rent rises by the minimum rent amount of like, what, $92, $800? So as their income increases, their rent portion increases, and so they kind of move up on that tier. And so by the time that they leave the program, they might have advanced five tiers. So as incentive for pursuing self-sufficiency activities, increasing their income, we provide incentive of $1,000 for each tier that they advance while doing the program.
These are people that have no income, they're paid what now?
Well, regardless of your income or not, there's still a minimum rent amount that our participants have to pay. What, they're 92s?
92s. Also based on the bedroom size for them as well.
Well, we just want to motivate our families to, you know, improve their income and become self-sufficient. So that's just another.
So they don't have the funds to pay or something?
What's that?
If they don't have the money, if they don't have their money, $1, you have to pay the funds to pay or something?
No, they're responsible to come over to one way or the other. And we swung that at the briefing to say that, no, we don't, the program is not just free rent. You have to put.
I mean, if something happens with a crisis, and they're not working, they don't have any money. Is there another way that we can do something? Because sometimes people don't want to hear anybody.
There are rental assistance programs out there, or, you know, if they, if they're not working, maybe they're receiving like general assistance or something, or the township or something like that. And so there are options for people, and, you know, there's, you know, we do, if they're struggling and they come to us, we can refer them to people who are in assistance.
They just want to know what's the hardship or something like that. Because I'm not saying we're not poor people and not paying rent. But there are a few times people don't get no money, want to do that. So I am a resident, speaking up for the people. And I've been around, and I have people calling me, and I have to pay the taxes, or get money.
So Activity 2012-1, the local payment standard, as everyone over the milestone rent is going up significantly in our community. So in the past, our payment, local payment standard was at 110%, and we raised it to 120% to give our citizens more housing opportunities in our community. Similar with Activity 2013-1, the right side vouchers. We modified this because we have a high rate for one-bedrooms right now, and they're not finding any. We had people lose their vouchers that were able to lease up because there are not many one-bedroom units available. So we just came up with some provisions that participants who are aggressive losing their vouchers because they aren't able to get something at a time line, can't secure a two-bedroom unit instead, especially if they're part of a hard-to-house population, such as reentry, experiencing or aggressive homelessness, foster youth, et cetera. Additionally, any participant, if they can locate a two-bedroom unit within the same payment standard as a one-bedroom unit in the same program, and that's where our county divided into sections. So as she was talking about earlier, with the local payment standard, it's based on the area that you live in. So it changes depending on the address. But if they're able to find a two-bedroom under that one-bedroom cost, then they could, that's an option for them as well. But if they are not able to, we will allow that tenant to pay the difference between the one and two-bedroom up until, up to $150. So that was an added. Sponsor-based voucher program. We increased the number of available vouchers for family service providers from 20 to 30. And then we're also going to have financial vouchers available specifically for families of gun violence. And finally, Activity 2013-1, the construction trades in our Youth Build program. We just modified it to also include milestone credits. So as participants advance through the program, they'll earn incentives. Just keep them motivated to continue through the program and graduate from there.
So two things, the construction trades and Youth Build program, that, this fund or this activity is outside of what the Youth Build grant serves. But this is for us to serve our people who are maybe 25 or older, but who are, you know, on our program and wanting to, you know, receive those same services. So we're designing a program that mirrors Youth Build, a workforce program that mirrors Youth Build for our clients. And then also, we missed one update, and it's the student voucher program update.
Is that something too, that you talked about earlier, that you had money for people that couldn't get their rent or something? I thought I heard you talk about that.
For supportive services?
Yeah, you said, said like you made a grant for.
Yes, for the county.
Yeah, you have that program, too, don't you?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, for our student voucher program, it was the LNOA Commitment Student Voucher Program, which allowed us to pay the housing costs for students that U of I, they were incoming freshman and transfer students for sophomore year, and we would pay the cost of their on-campus housing. But we are expanding that to also provide vouchers for anyone who's in the age of 17 to 24 that's on either our housing program or another housing program throughout the state if they tend to state school.
Well, just for our, for ours, for anywhere throughout the state, for our clients.
We have a partnership with you guys from, with the thing you graduated from U of I to do and making a, it's Martin Luther King, 700, 188. They graduate from U of I or anyone from the college? Is yours, your program, is that for the college student?
Uh, no.
You remember that, because I know they partnership with Upper Bound or students who want to graduate from Upper Bound, they have to go to U of I, and they would match the money with grad money. But I don't know if you.
We have a scholarship program, but it's not, not like that. This is just what she's talking about, it for housing only. So it's for, what we already have with the U of I is that any student throughout the state that's accepting of the Illinois Commitment, they can come and we'll pay for it, except for five a year. But our clients get priority if they go to the U of I. But what we're finding is that not a lot of our clients are choosing to go to the U of I. And so we want to really focus, refocus on serving the clients that we have. So our goal is if we have students who are in assisted households with HACC, we'll cover the cost of housing for them if they decide to go to a state school.
Yeah, so they was mentioning that, we were matching the fund with, we were matching the fund. We were matching the funds with that.
So any questions regarding this particular program?
Good job, y'all. And so again, this is not for approval, just for review. So what happens next is on November first. That's what I run a joke all week. On November first, we'll be posting this for public comment, and then we'll have a public hearing. So we'll send out the date of the public hearing to the board. And after that, we plan to get it approved at our December meeting and submit it to HUD so we can get an approval and get some of these activities implemented.
Okay, thank you. And on behalf of the board, I would just like to express my feelings about how the team has worked together. There was a lot of resolutions today, and then also this discussion on the MTW plan. So oftentimes, you don't, from one month to the next, you don't really have a whole lot of time because some of these are pretty detailed and in-depth. So I just want to say that the team continues to work collaboratively together in order to get these reports out on time. And I know that we have had some staff members that have been ill. And so, but despite all of that, the reports have come in great shape and form. And I just wanted to say that on behalf of the board, for continuing to do the outstanding job that you're doing. And I think it's important that you know this and other team members that are not afraid to know that because we recognize it. You know, another thing too, sometimes we have to burn midnight oil to get through a lot of this stuff too. So I want to thank everybody, the board members as well. So without any further ado, I'd like to, we're down to our executive office report.
So first, we have our Youth Build member Jacob's feelings. So what the Youth Build staff came up with is Jacob is a polite, hard-working, and exhibits leadership qualities in conjunction with completing all program requirements. He also recently earned his driver's license and will be joining the HACC team as a maintenance intern. So I think Jacob starts next week. So yes, Jacob starts, and so we're really excited, and he's been a great addition. So Shavon just come up to him one more time. And then you can say.
So as I just said, Jacob's a great kid, and I'm just happy, I'm sure my team is never, he'll still be around and we'll get to see him. You know, so a great kid, and we like that.
Thank you. Next slide, please. Our September Employee of the Month is Mr. Andre Cretzen. And Andre is our Education Coordinator for Youth Build. And the comment that was left is Andre always has a positive and cheerful attitude. You can't help but laugh or smile when engaging with him. Additionally, he has been very hands-on and has been instrumental in trying to get the gala together. He's creative, has great ideas, and gets things done if needed. Andre is definitely a great asset during this process. And I would definitely agree with that. Every time I see Andre, I laugh before he says anything else out of his mouth. Mr. Shavon, you can say a couple words to Andre. Come on up.
I think I'm going to tease Andre. We recently got upgraded to be able to move into smart casual wear, and he is our poster child. He is clean and dressed every single day, so that's very cool. But Andre, I'm glad to have him on our team. He surpassed me when I was Education Coordinator, is that he got a full group through. Every single person graduated on time for, you know, the ceremony. So we always had some stragglers in the past, and so we can really good at random and getting them through. So he gets us going and gets the kids through, and he's on the trail to do it again. So this graduation, we're looking at having almost thirty graduates, and that's all the testament to him and the overall team, so he's great.
Andre, would you like to go ahead and say anything?
Not really.
No way.
Well, I got him. What I will say is I do thank you all for the opportunity to serve in our community as an educator. I homie every day as I have my little three children about the importance of education. And to work along with Mr. Shavon and the staff here, it has been an honor to serve our community. I've only been here five years, but I'm saying hour because I'm just filtering right in to make sure that we're doing the outcomes that the program is for us to see. So I am just dedicated to serve under Ms. Lilly and Shavon and the team to make sure that our community alleviates the violence and try to find a different way, a different outcome. And so whatever part I can play in that, I am here to serve at the feet of our community. Thank you.
The other thing about Andre is that when I came here to register the students to vote, you had an air about yourself, I would like that. I mean, have you ever helped him afford a new cell phone?
No.
I mean, I'm not a young man here, but I like to bring hundreds of kids, and you just have a certain demeanor about yourself. I need to pick up on that real quick. Don't go forward.
I had a pleasure meeting Andre this past weekend in a church event. And let me say that not only does he inspire our youth, but he inspired all hundred of us in the room with his message. He has a gift.
Yeah, you're okay.
Great job, Pastor.
But yes, Andre, I have to get a trophy for you. No, you did that, I will both laugh. I always got an excuse, right? We owe you a trophy and a gift card and everything.
I appreciate you.
Thank you, Andre. All right, activities. So we have some development updates. So Pioneer Street is, construction has started. Youth Build will be moving hopefully December first. They'll be completed following, let's see. They completed the remaining demolition and underground plumbing stubouts for the new bathroom design. BSI also cleaned and prepared the worksite for concrete pours to fill with penetrations of the slab. The work performed by BSI on the week of ten twenty-four included the pouring of concrete at the penetration cutouts of the existing concrete slab for underground plumbing lines. BSI also prepares to start the framing of partition walls on October twenty-seventh. So hopefully, I spoke to Brian last week with Building Systems, and he's pretty confident that they will get things done on time and will be, at least for this new cohort of Youth Build, will be able to move into the new building. The cohort started in January. So across our fingers and hope, nothing slows that progress.
When you get the movement there, there's some commissions that would like to do a walkthrough. Do you think that you could set up time for that?
Yes, we'll definitely do a presentation.
It's been a long, long time since we were there and covered parts. Blessed building, that was quite a while ago. So maybe we're getting really, really close, so we'll get an opportunity to see who will want to go and see hopefully from this part.
Yes, definitely will do that. I also want to let the board know that we submitted a PPA for staircase, so we're hoping to get some really significant upgrades at that property. It really needs it. So some of the suggestions from the engineers that walked through was that we replace the roof, kitchen cabinets, doors, floors. Add a one-bedroom or efficiency apartment on each floor. Upgrade security systems to keyless five inches in buildings and apartment units. Upgrade the common areas, just a complete live reading lounge on alternate floors. Renovate the elevator cabs and then HVAC systems for the building, including the air system. So we're hoping that those tax credits, you know, that PPA will move to the next round and we'll be in a good position.
With the staircase, the upgrade, anybody mention about in the back there were all those different people that kind of walked there, they get their hand in the back, they were just like getting that in because I've worked by many, many times and seen like the whole neighborhood was blocked in the back there.
In the back of staircase, like in the parking lot?
Yes, in the back parking lot. With this gathering of all different kind of people all the time. I just noticed that, I noticed that about five, six, seven, nine. But the answer would be, you don't have any problem with that, Andre?
Um, not that I'm aware of, but.
Yeah, since then, MTV has removed that bus stop station there to where people would have congregated there. It's no longer there, so they don't congregate back there anymore.
So we have being bused there?
It's a bus stop, but it's like, it's just a sign now.
I can see that, and from the back end, there were all different people in that parking.
Yeah, if you want to stick that bit of that, that'd be good. So.
All right, Oakwood Trace, again, just bringing that back up. So the board, and I know we talked about it before, but we're still working on getting the lights and cameras upgraded. They have installed a temporary fence there. We were waiting on SK fencing to get the fence. I think it had to be powder coated, and it was supposed to be installed last week. So since they didn't get that done, they put up a temporary fence. And so these are just the photos of that. And that's when the car ran through the fence in the apartment and busted up the siding in the fence. So we got the insurance check for that. So right now, we're just waiting on the complete installation and kind of that's the mercy of SK fencing right now. All right, next slide. Big three over violence grant at Oakwood Trace. So here's what you asked about Dr. Henry. They'll be doing youth activities on academic support, leadership development, and enrichment activities. Also parental support programs, small business development, goal setting, and life coaching, and financial literacy. They actually have a kickoff today from three to five where they're meeting with all the residents. And then some safety initiatives that we'll be doing is anti-violence and conflict resolution programming, domestic violence awareness and prevention training, and then the Ring Door Bills. And so HACC will cover the cost of the subscription for one year through this grant as well. And then hopefully by that time, we'll have our cameras completely installed and our lights upgraded at that property.
So with that, with that radical tragedy over there, do you know people living there and do you know people where they're coming from? They do have, they do have those, that's the place we're inside. The complex is located.
We don't have any license places where there's.
They don't have, they have a lot of tracks.
Okay, I'm not sure what the city does. Do they have any? Well, I can get you some information on that next one.
Yes, because I know it's been probably.
I don't know that they were, I believe that they were on foot. I don't know that they were driving.
There's been like five or six shootings with the same little gathering of teams over there. And I'm just wondering, is some of them people related to people in my place? I get down to people there, and I know it's been about six or seven people that got shot on that.
Yeah, it could be. I mean, I don't know the answers as far as how many of them are residents. I can get you that. I know that it is a common place that people have gathered. And so through lease violations and other things like that, we're trying to break some of that up. Especially if it's a guest of yours or you're hosting these big parties, we will be sending out lease violations and trying to get those.
I heard there's a lot of students that got shot, a lot of students. But I didn't understand that part. They're saying there's a lot of kids around that age that got around there for this. Many, many shootings right there.
So we are working cooperatively with the city, trying to do what we can on our end and do our part to help. So I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of that, you know, you do have a plan in place to get this fixed. And so then, we have the Commissioners Conference upcoming January eighth or eleventh, and that'll be in Orlando, Florida. If you plan on attending, if you complete RSVP to Dana by October thirty-first, the rooms are filling up fast. So she needs to get those booked if you plan to go. And I hope you all can go, or as many as you, as many as possible can attend. It would be a really good conference. We have our landlord incentives link live on our website. So landlords can now go in and see all the details about how to receive the incentive. And so we'll also be doing some promotion, some promotion on different platforms to be able to push this out. So already on Facebook, it's boosted and promoted. We've got some ads going up. And so we're hoping that this will really help us get clients leased a lot faster. Next slide.
You did say you had a meeting with, is that what this comes? You had a meeting with something?
Yeah, we had a meeting with landlords in August. In September. And so, but we have another one coming up. And so at our meeting in September, we had about thirty landlords participate. It was a really good turnout, and they, you know, they learned a lot. We talked about source of income, that was our primary goal at that meeting. But this one, it'll be more about the HCB program, HUS inspection process. And so this is going to be on November eighteenth, eleven to twelve-thirty. And so our staff will be, our HCB staff will be hosting this, and they'll have a light lunch. So they'll be talking about the nuts and bolts of HUS, general requirements of the program, HUS checklist, and abatement. And then we have a couple Youth Build events. Our graduation ceremony for Youth Build will be on Saturday, December third, at the I Hotel. Is that right, Shavon? Okay. Oh, at the I Hotel. And so we're really looking forward to this Fall Twenty-two cohort. So we anticipate about twenty-five to thirty high school diploma graduates. So we still have a second cohort that started in October who are working on their construction part. But we're going to allow them to go ahead and graduate with just the high school diploma part in January as well, even though they'll still be in the program. So just another kind of thing to support them through it. Some of them may finish construction by then, we'll see. So we anticipate about twenty-five to thirty high school diploma graduates, at least seventeen, or definitely seventeen NTCER graduates, possibly more, and then seventeen to twenty certificate graduates. So those are the Flavers, Fortliff, CPR First, they have different things that they earn during the program. And then last month, our Youth Build program helped our maintenance department. Units turned over, so those were kind of growing. It was becoming a bit of a challenge for maintenance. So Youth Build stepped in and did the clean outs, so it was a good opportunity for the youth to work with the maintenance. And I got a lot of positive feedback about our youth program that we're seeing. They want us to come back and help some of that thing. We have some October resident events. So we did Halloween Bingo, Arts and Crafts, Bid Wiz, and Halloween party in each of the buildings. So Jovi has been going out there, having fun with the seniors, so they really enjoyed him. And I think today, well, yesterday I went and we did karaoke. So I don't have any pictures, but maybe I'll put them up for December. But we did karaoke in a costume contest, so that was pretty fun.
You want a video of karaoke?
We don't want my karaoke. I had to get them started. Warm them up. And so we've had a really great year. And so the last three months of the year, we've been really focused on trying to celebrate our staff and doing some fun activities. And so we had some different things planned for the month that I just wanted to make the, for the last three months that I wanted to make the board aware of. And so this month, we did a door decorating contest and a Halloween party where everyone brings a dish and a costume contest. And so that'll be on October thirty-first. So it'll just kind of be like during the lunch hour, we ask all the staff, we'll do a fall potluck. So, and the doors around the building are pretty scary, so we got to pitch you on the next slide. But and then for the month of November, we'll be volunteering with Stone Creek Pantry to help put turkey baskets together. So that'll be our giving back one. And then for December, we're planning an all-staff holiday meeting on December fourteenth, the day before the board meeting. And then we'll have a new sweater contest and a holiday celebration for the board as well at the meeting. And the maintenance department is volunteering for an activity with our seniors as well in December. So the next slide, we'll go through some photos of the doors around here. So the staff have really gotten creative, so it's pretty cool to see. All right. And then I just wanted to let the board know that I spoke on, what did it say? On Friday, I spoke at the Housing Action Illinois Conference on Source of Income Protection. So they asked me to speak from a housing authority perspective, so I did present at that conference in Bloomington. And I just wanted to share the photo with the board. And it's about the new Source of Income law that'll be enacted in January. And then important dates, November board meeting. October thirty-first, we have a staff fall potluck and door decoration competition. November seventh, there's the Agency-wide Volunteer Day. So if any of the board members would like to come out to volunteer with the staff, I have Dana send out that information. November and December board meeting will be combined on Thursday, December fifteenth. We have an all-staff holiday meeting on Wednesday, December fourteenth. HACC office closed on December twenty-second through the thirtieth for the holiday, and we will reopen on January. HSCC office closed on December 22nd through 30th for the holiday, and we will reopen on January 3rd, 2023. And then on the next slide, the final slide, I just wanted to share with the board that all the staff were picked today for breast cancer awareness, and so we took a group picture right before the board meeting. I just wanted to share it. And that's the end of my report, and I...
I wanted to start by mentioning something that actually, I'm not sure if it was mentioned in that report, but on September, we got our auditor's report for 2021. I'm gonna basically read the paragraph of the opinion, which is pretty much out of all the numerous various unaudited reports, has what is the most important part. So it says, "In our opinion, the accompanying financial statements present fairly and non-material respect respected financial position of the business type of entities and the aggregate discreetly presented component units of the housing authority of Champaign County as of December 31st, 2021. And the respective changes in financial position and where applicable, cash flows are off from the year ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America." So like I said, this is the most important part of the audit report.
And then we will have, in our December meeting, we'll have the audit report for the board to review.
Yeah, well, for those of you who may have dealt with audit reports in the past, when that paragraph says that they don't reflect the financial statements or that worst-case scenario, there's no basis for picking that supplement. So I just wanted to mention that before doing the initial mention that of the monthly disbursements in the year versus budget statements. So the month of September, we dispersed $367,000, almost $367,000. Our most important disbursements were, once again, to Bedrock, $11,880, which is basically the part of the payroll that you pay for their third-party property management. Something that was very important also is that in the month of September, we paid pilot. Pilot is actually paid from March to March. So this covered March of, actually April, the 1st of 2021, yeah, 2021, to March 31st of 2022. What I've served in the past is that usually isn't, like I said, paid, but when that doesn't get paid and you start paying calls from the county. And so I mentioned that because that was one of the most important checks. We paid actually, it was like $50,000, I think it is, like that. We paid Omar Rats, we paid Mohammed, we paid finally. And we also paid, yeah, $54,503 for the Champaign County treasure. We also paid for Prospect Senior, that actually came from the Prospect Senior's bank account, which was, it was actually $78,000 for 130,500. And then we also had a newcomer to this group of vendors, Squareaway Construction, which is a U-Field vendor, for some paying, we paid them over $2,000. Those were the most important non-referring disbursements. And I say non-referring because it's considering to pay insurance. By the way, I don't mention payroll because it's an actual check or directed. Payroll is usually drafted directly from a bank account, which is around $35,000 per month, for speaking for paper. Which is by Wiki. Going to the financial statements, you have been, if you don't have that, you can't do it. So what I wanted to reflect is like this components, and this is an apology to the balance sheet in July, or I should say, September. So this blue bar is the revenue, and the orange bar are the operating costs. So it helps to see graphic and what the difference is, because the difference between both graphs is pretty much the next chart is the same thing, but for the discrete components. In 2023, there's going to be two more sets of parts. One for, I'm sorry, two more, one for Milton and one for Sugar Pixel. Those will start showing up in 2023 as well as the 2024 part. And finally, the last graph. One more thing?
That was it.
Oh, that was it? Okay, well, yeah, no, that's it. So this is, this is the one that shows basically the difference between the real and the expected. The first group is the revenue, slightly under what was budgeted. Costs were under, which both of them have opposite effects on. The third one is the net operating income, and we're actually ahead of what was already for the first, the first quarters. That's kind of the most important highlights of the manual segments. No questions? Okay, there isn't any questions?
Thank you, Miguel. Thank you.
Okay, do your report.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the financial report for September detail check listing and also the cash disbursements.
Move.
Second. We've been properly moved in second, Brokaw, please.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Ovachowski?
Yes.
Vice Chair Park?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Okay, are there any public comments on non-agenda items? There are none. Okay, there's no closed session, but we're gonna have a motion to adjourn this meeting. I have a motion for approval.
So move, you'll do it.
Second.
Brokaw?
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Park?
Yes.
Commissioner Ovachowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey and Chris?
Yes.
Okay, all right, we're getting ready to call order Brokaw for the Central Illinois Development Corporation meeting.
I'm ready now.
Okay, good. So we don't need to necessarily report it on your call, she was just changing over the...
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, it's 4:01 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order for the Central Illinois Development Corporation meeting, held, you know, today, October 27th. Call, order, and Brokaw, please.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Park?
Present.
Commissioner Ovachowski?
Present.
Commissioner McCarland?
Present.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Present.
Commissioner Sealan?
Present.
Commissioner Bailey and Chris?
Present.
Okay, approval of the agenda. Motion for approval.
Second.
We've properly moved in second. Brokaw?
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Park?
Yes.
Commissioner Ovachowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Sealan?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey and Chris?
Yes.
Are there any public comments on agenda items only? There are none. It's a new business. We have a resolution authorizing the approval of a loan from Housing Authority Champaign County and authorizing the execution of the loan documents.
So this loan is again related to the loan that the Board, the Housing Authority Board just approved for us to give to Central Illinois Development Corporation for Oakwood Trace. And so this resolution is authorizing the approval of the loan and for my execution of that loan on behalf of Central Illinois Development Corporation.
I have a question, probably for Eric. So how does it work when the loan is re... Okay, so the loan, I'm sorry, I don't know how to ask this. So how do we pay back the loan to the Housing Authority, is that right?
Correct, it's set up that, I mean, there will be, there's no monthly payments or anything like that. It would be, I think we got in there a, get a little term is, as far as, sometimes it's like a 30-year term or something like that. In many situations like this, it will ultimately be forgivable.
Oh, okay.
The plan would be, there's several moments on the property right now. One is a HUD loan that the Housing Authority provided. There was also, I believe, some home funds that the Housing Authority received that went into it as well. The idea would be, once you retain full ownership of the property, some of these loans can be waived, in which case then there's less debt on the property going forward. If you want to do some sort of, if you want to go for some additional tax credits down the line or anything like that, you don't have as much debt weighing it down. And this would be one of those loans as well that you could ultimately forgive and essentially write off.
Okay, so then there's no stipulation for monthly payment, that's right.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, that was my, thank you.
And also just to clarify, so the reason why you're adopting this as the Central Illinois Development Corporation meeting is because that entity acts as the general partner for the town hall limited partnership. So the owner itself is the one getting the loan, but this board is actually saying, we're approving the loan for the project, for the actual ownership interest. So the loan isn't coming to the property, it's going to the actual limited partnership, but this is the entity that controls the limited partnership.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one question too. Where would this, where would this be filed? Where is this vote from here once we approve it?
Well, once you're approving it today, we're just wanting the approval now because as we work through things, there might be, it might be a couple of weeks before we decide, hey, let's pull the plug on, pull the switch on this and let's move forward and get the loan taken care of. Like Willie mentioned, we want to talk to the investor to go through some of that. And ultimately, once, once Willie decides, hey, we're ready to move, it's essentially a transfer of the money. Dr. Miguel moved the money over from the Housing Authority and just moved it into the limited partnership account.
Okay, that clears up my question.
Sure, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we, is there any other questions? If not, I'll ask for a motion for approval.
So move.
We've been properly moved in second, Brokaw, please.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Park?
Yes.
Commissioner Ovachowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull? Commissioner Sealan?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey and Chris?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any, any public comments on non-agenda items?
That was the, that was the main reason for having meetings, that we get the loan situation taken care of.
Okay.
Nothing else.
If we have no other business, I would like to ask for a motion for approval of adjournment. We've been properly moved in second, Brokaw, please.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Park?
Yes.
Commissioner Ovachowski? Commissioner McCarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull? Commissioner Sealan?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey and Chris?
Yes.
During the 4:07 PM.